We will call the Harris County Board of Commissioners to order, so, 29:10. And, um, the public police down at our heads will return thanks. Dear Lord, we come to you as we do every minute and thank you very much for the blessings that you have bestowed upon us, the residents of Harris County. We thank you, though, Lord, for those who keep us safe. We thank you, Lord, for those who support us in all the services that are needed and required. And we thank you for our residents. And, Lord, we just ask that you can keep us safe, continue to do that, and bestow your grace upon us. All these things we ask in Jesus' name, amen. If you will stand before me and question the business.
Amen to Jesus, to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item on the agenda tonight will be the approval of the minutes of the regular session of April the 16th, 2019, the Complanned Update Work Session of April the 16th, 2019, and the conversation of April the 30th, 2019. Do I have a motion? Will it? All right, we have a motion. And a second, is there any discussion or any changes? And Nancy Dees to prepare. All those in favor? Motion approved. Our, um, do we have appearance? No appearance, Mrs. Dees, okay. There's no whole business? And under due business, we have several items. The first one being surplus property. With the recent acquisition of several new vehicles, the county has surplus, a surplus of vehicles for disposition. And in addition, there's several pieces of equipment and some obsolete, unusable parts for disposition. Those are listed here. In order to dispose of the property, the board must declare the listed items in surplus and authorize the sale of the same on gov deals or other legal means. Our vehicle maintenance director will perform the gov deals transactions. There's a motion and a vote needed to declare the listed items in surplus and to authorize the selling on gov deals or other legal means. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to declare the surplus and to stop.
Okay, we have a motion. Okay, and a second, are there any questions or is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of this approval? Motion carries. We have two requests for tax refund. Do you want to handle both these in one or?
Can.
Okay, we can do that, or do you want to take them separately? You might have any questions?
Okay.
Okay, all in one, okay? The first request is for John Michael Thompson, 10898 Georgia Highway 315 in Catala. The amount is $41.60, which is that warm tax. And the reason, this tag was purchased on February 25th, 2019, and the truck was totaled on February the 28th, 2019. The tax commissioner agrees, and the Board of Tax Assessors also agrees. The second one is Michael J. Zabino, 489 Cowan in Rose Hamilton. The amount is $432.22. That is the difference between the amount requested and the cost of the FIFI. The reason, and this is for a boat, not a vehicle, this is for a boat. The reason, the boat was sold in 2014. The tax commissioner agrees. This boat was sold in 2014. The taxes were paid up until 2017. And when Mr. Zabino found out there would be a FIFI issue, he came into check on it and he asked for a refund at that time. The Board of Tax Assessors also agrees. Is there a motion?
I'd make a motion that we could refund the tax money and the amount of the rest.
Okay, and a second? All right, there's a motion. Second, any questions or any discussion? No questions or no discussion? All those in favor of refunding both these? Okay, motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the, is a resolution, which is the re-imposition of the T-S税. The trans, that is the transportation sales and use tax was approved in 2012 and is scheduled to end in 2022. In order to continue the tax, which provides funds for transportation, infrastructure, roads, bridges, and the airport, a resolution is needed to show the county's support for the tax and the re-imposition of same. The resolution to start the process has been requested by the Regional, by the River Valley Regional Commission, and in order to move forward, a motion and a vote are needed regarding the resolution and the resolution agrees. Whereas the Transportation Investment Act of 2010, providing for creation of special districts, determines with the geographical boundary on the 12 regional commissions to levy a sales and use tax for the purpose of funding transportation infrastructure improvements. And whereas the River Valley Region of Georgia, consisting of Clay, Crisp, Casita-Chattahoochee, Dooley, Georgetown, Quilton, Harris, Macon, Marion, Muskogee, Randolph, Sly, Stewart, Sumter, Talbot, Taylor, and Webster Counties, implemented the requirements of the Transportation Investment Act of 2010, and voters considered and approved a transportation sales and use tax referendum on July the 31st, 2012. And whereas voter approval of the special district tenure sales and use tax is providing funding of transportation projects and services in the county at levels never before possible. And whereas said act provides that upon adoption of resolutions by the governing bodies of a majority of the counties within the special district, in which a tax authorized by said act is in effect, and a election may be held for re-imposition of the tax while the tax is in effect. Therefore, be it resolved that the Harris County Board of Commissioners does hereby support the special district referendum for the purpose of re-imposition of the special district transportation sales and use tax, and the call of the Regional Roundtable by River Valley Regional Commission pursuant to set act to perform those actions necessary to enable said referendum. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution shall be transmitted to the Director of VJ, of Planning of the Georgia Department of Transportation, and the River Valley Regional Commission, so resolved through the adopted estate, the 7th of May, 2019, Harris County Board of Commissioners. Is there a motion?
So, Lord.
We have a motion, and I'll second that. Is there any discussion or any questions?
I'd just maybe make a couple of comments. This, uh, you know, is charged basically 1% on sales tax, and certainly with the tourists and visitors to the county, they, they almost do that. We were one of three regions in the state to approve the first one, and it has brought in for, you know, the two separate pots of money, 75% pot that the state uses to do major projects that are voted on by the Regional Roundtable. And Harris County got several of those projects, you know, one, most times were finished, one still left to start, and we've got a couple more that are in, two left to start, and a couple more that are in progress. This brings us about, it's approaching a million dollars a year, the 25% pot that comes directly to the county to do with as we see fit. And we have been able to do a lot of resurfacing of roads, and our roads are in, I think, very, very good shape compared to many of our neighbors. But it's also allowed us to do some work on a couple of bridges. And it is coming up for renewal in 2022, but we want to go ahead and get this down. I have talked to, as I was Chairman of the Roundtable, and I've talked to all of the other counties involved. They all want to see it continue also. There's some counties, some of our smaller counties in this region, that got more money in one month than they had budgeted for the entire year. So, I mean, it's really been a help for this area. And even, and Muskogee County is very much in favor of it also. So, I, I think it's something that has been well, well-accepted, well-received, and it's done a lot of good for the region.
Thank you, Mr. Dees. All those in favor?
Let me ask one question, please.
Okay.
If we approve this resolution, when will it be on the ballot?
That would have to be determined.
By the Roundtable?
Well, each, each county is going to vote on this.
You have to have a majority, understand that, so?
Well, yeah, but, but as far as when it goes on the roundtable, each, each one will have some input. Columbus may have some concerns about which year that it goes on the ballot. My, my opinion is, if we put it on the ballot in November of next year, if it should fail for some reason, I would be very close to vote, you have to wait two years. So, we could then put it on the ballot again if we voted to do so in 2022, which would put it in place just before and despite.
That's what I was trying to get to, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? No one else? Okay, all those in favor? The next item on our agenda tonight is the appeal of a planning commission decision on Mr. Charles McCann. Mr. McCann is, is appealing the decision of the Planning Commission, which was made on March 20th, to hold an action by Brian Reeves to deny division of 1.75 acres on an easement road into two smaller non-conformity lots, because the county requires residential lots to be no less than two acres. And the subdivision of lots on the easement road are limited to heirs or family members. So, we will hear now from Mr. McCann and Spence.
Yes, ma'am. I just want to quickly introduce myself. My name is Laura Blaz. I'm with the Benz Law Group in Newton, Georgia, and I'm here to just assist Mr. McCann. He's very passionate about this project, and he's put a lot of time and effort and investment, and so I want you to hear from him as to his vision and everything that he has done, and then I'll just address some of the legal components of the argument.
Okay, Mr. McCann.
Thanks for your time. Um, I'm going to try to get through this, because I know you all have had a busy day. I stumbled a bit. I've got a little amateurish powerpoint presentation, some sort of photograph.
About five minutes.
I'm going to think we're going to get pretty close. So, anyway, just a very little bit about me. I'm a Georgia professional land surveyor. I've got over 45 years of land surveying experience, land planning experience, and land development experience. I'm a land professional. I'm committed to integrity and professionalism in all my land dealings wherever I go. I'm a passionate environmentalist and a good land steward. I specialize in creating environmentally friendly community living, and that's what I'm trying to do with these two lots I'm proposing. I started my house search, lot search, about two years ago. I was referred to this very late, like already, Georgia Power's in-house forester and land lease manager, who I was working with on the project, on some property that I'm on the next quarter, Carter Leon, in Houston County. Some photographs I'd like to look at. If you can't see them, we can kind of get into them a little bit, you'll get them up where you can see them. But, um, what I did when I found my lot last fall, it's a 1.8 acre lot, is I went to the Community Development Department, I met with Brian, and the Community Development Director, and we had a really good relationship with Brian, and he told me what I could and could not do with the lot. He said it was grandfathered in to build up to two houses, as long as the houses were attached, either a walkway or a breezeway. And those houses could be virtually any size, as long as the septic system was supporting. And he encouraged me to go out and get level three soil tests on the lots, which I did. I've got level three soil tests on both lots that will permit a four-bedroom house on each lot, and I've also got a verbal approval from the Environmental Health Department that they endorse my two lots split, as long as the county will approve it. What I did after that was I went and traveled around the county, trying to do a little research on the lake. And it's, it's interesting, you said that the lots were grandfathered to use in easements, as long as it was an estate or for family planning purposes. What I found on the lake is there's approximately 550 lots on the east side of the lake, which is the Georgia side. Almost every one of those lots are on Georgia Power leased property. My particular lot is a D lot. It's a really rare lot. And I bought it from a family that had it for eight years. It's never been, it had structures on it for some time, but I've operated it for eight years. Of all those 550 lots down the lake, the average acreage is approximately one acre, okay? And they're all Georgia Power leased lots. One-third of the lots are accessed by easements, and most of those easements support two, three, four, or even five ounces. So, I decided to do my research a little closer home. I went down Barless Ferry Road, through the Witskill, for the very first time. Directly across the street from your water treatment plant on Barless Ferry Road, I noticed the driveway with a builder sign right here. I'm a hilly ox. This is an ingress egress going back to four lots. There's another one that serves that ingress egress, and I think that might be the county, I'm not sure. But currently, a fellow named Scott Pearson, who appears to be extremely high-quality builder in the county, is, is building as we speak, two houses on these two lots. This lot is eight tenths of an acre. It's 10% smaller than mine. The lot in the middle has got a little old, 20 or 30-year-old lake house on property, and it's seven tenths of an acre, about 20% smaller than the two I proposed, each of the two I proposed. And he's building about a 5,000 square foot house on an acre lot right here. Both of these houses he's building have got brand-new four-bedroom septic tanks that have been put in between the property and the lake on both of them. I want to point out again, this lot is approximately the same size as what I'm proposing. This one is much smaller. The most interesting thing about this to me is if you notice this blue line and the red line right here, what I've got down here, Harris County Water Treatment Plant. They all pull in water from the lake right here at this point, okay? They gave me a hard time at the Planning and Zoning Commission, Planning Commission last month, because they, they were worried about my septic tank leaking into the lake from a mile and a half away. I went out on my boat a week later, and I took this picture. I think this builder's doing a marvelous job, almost exactly what I want to do. Want to save big trees, want to build a nice house in the middle. He's doing this on a lot smaller than mine. Look what he's doing next to it. The water intake for Harris County Water System. No problem there. Sail right through. Building two houses right there next to the water intake system. I think the equitable treatment I'm receiving at this point is just unfair. Let's go back and do a little research on my lot. Just I do. This is Skirge's Road, comes off of Witskill Road right at Anyop Church. This is a 1965 area map from US Geo Service. My lot's right here. In 1965, there were eight houses on this road. This road was probably mostly dirt. It may have been paved, a portion of it, but this portion right here was most certainly dirt, possibly just a logging road, a gravel road, to get to these, what were basically fishing cabins on the lake. Out of those five structures on the, on this road, three of the structures were on my property. Three of them. The road, the county came in and saved the road sometime in the last, probably 20 years, and they voluntarily stopped the road about 200 feet shorter than my property. I have a D to D ingress egress going to this lot. My ingress egress 16 feet wide. It's a foot wider than the photographs that show you where it's currently built at. Here's my lot proposal. Got two lots, they're approximately nine tenths of an acre apiece, almost an acre. If I was allowed to go to the edge of the water, which is what all the Georgia lot, Georgia lease lots are allowed to do, it would be over an acre for each of my lots. As a surveyor, we've gone, we've done extensive tree surveying on this property. I'm showing these trees. We've got trees anywhere from, all the trees shown on this property are 10 inches larger all the way up almost 30 inches in length. We're planning on saving all these trees, with the exception of two or three that are close to the house. We don't want lawns on this property. We want natural vegetation, and walkways through the woods to get to low-level docks. And I'd really like the county to consider making this an equitable situation for me as a builder developer, similar to my ability to develop. What's going on right down the road?
Thank you, Mr. McCann. Can I just add a couple of things, or do I need to?
Five minutes. I really want to go over and see.
Give me 30 seconds.
All right, I'll do it.
30 seconds, I'll talk fast.
All right, 30 seconds.
Okay, so, essentially, I just wanted to talk to you briefly about the, the most recent updates that have happened in Supreme Court of Georgia in the past two years, specifically as it pertains to these types of, these types of actions. The Supreme Court of Georgia has consistently said that you are essentially the judge. This is an adjudicative function. It's not a legislative function. We're not creating things, but you serve the adjudicative function in that you are applying a specific process and specific regulations to this request. So, under Section 1702, that is your ordinance that specifies what you need to require to consider this request. Under the documentation that was submitted on March 1st, clearly shows that Mr. McCann's request is in line with public safety, welfare, as well as the health requirements of everything that is. There's no reason, there's been no evidence that has shown that his request is contrary to any of those factors, so therefore, applying that standard lawfully requires that his request be accepted, plus also the equitable argument of, he is surrounded by completely all other .5 acre parcels that are accessed by easements. It's in line with the comprehensive plan in that if the subdivision of the property is approved, it's not going to change the aesthetics, it's not going to change the density of that particular neighborhood. I think those are very distinguishable factors that would distinguish this body's agreement with allowing the property to subdivide from anything else that would come before this body.
Thank you, Spence. We have a public hearing at 7:30, which is in two minutes, so right away we have to start with that.
I do have 30 seconds.
Okay, so we need to call the public hearing to order in about two minutes, maybe a minute and a half, and then we will resume.
Okay.
Now, may I ask you a question? May I have a seat? I'll just public hearing to order, and I will read the procedures of the public hearing. This is a special use application. I will read the application, and we have the presentation by the applicant, Mr. Morlowe. Comments by individuals in favor of the application or opposition of the application. Any summary or rebuttal comments that Mr. Morlowe would like to make. We will close the public hearing, and then the board will take action. The special use permit application is the application of Linda Morlowe, Lowhurst Farm and LLM properties. The location is the farm land across from 19710 Georgia Highway 219, West Point, Mount 023, Portus 23B, and 23B 0001, Land Lot 200, Land District 4. The acreage is 25.636 acres. The present use is agricultural with corn mazes and farm tours, field trips. The proposed use is to add a farmer's market and farm dinners. The use permitted, the farm dinners and farmer's market are permitted in A1, C1, and C4. The property is currently owned A1. The special use matrix is 58.1 and 60. There will be the asterisk parking requirements of 100, 1 to 300 square feet of floor area. The planning commission recommendation is approval, and the staff recommendation is also approval. So, Mr. Morlowe, you here for me?
Yes, ma'am. This is really, uh, I'm really here for a special use permit for a special use permit. This all started when I wanted restaurants to go with initial special use permit. For some reason, I was told I couldn't have bathrooms, you know, I'm going to have 200 kids on a field trip at any time during the year, and I have 240 of them, I mean, nobody cares. If I want to build permanent restaurants, which I thought would be implied, I have to build something else and call it that restaurants, etc. Makes no sense, it's not a lot. Now, did I want to follow, want it? Absolutely. But I really thought I'd have bathrooms done by now. Now, I'm in the middle of planning, that day, cabin, everything else goes on on, and I want to build restaurants. So, I'm here to add another special use permit to the same property. Look, do I want to know all this? Absolutely, but I think we need to look hard at our matrix. I think we need to look hard at our processes. I think we need to look hard at ourselves instead of being a county and knowing and figuring out how big a county it is. That's what I thought. The restaurant's going to be, the building itself is going to be concrete block, concrete floor, 12 by 24. Farmer's Market's going to be 20 by 24. All of them fall well in, the farmer's market, all of them will be inspected. The bathrooms will be, a, 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 farmer's market is going to be an open-air market to start with. It may stay that way, I'm not sure, depends on how well it grows, it may have to be something different, but the weight's staying right now, that's the intent. More than an acre to park on right now, so the 1 to 300 is not an issue, and will be a handicap sign for somebody that needs it. Already had the soil tests done, and it all turned out fine. I'm sure they are.
Okay. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition of this application? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition of this application? None whatsoever. Does the board have any questions? Mr. Marlowe?
I would assume that having the bathrooms would actually make it better suited for the field trips that are already happening.
And here's the thing, I mean, it's not like I tried to hide it. I pulled any punches, we come up with the last one, I, I had to take four acres out of conservation when the whole process came out. I was talking to community development the whole time, it was never issued until I went in in January to build a building permit, and I was told, oh, you can't do that. So why wasn't I told last year? I would have started the process in December, I would have been done, and I was, so here I am in May.
And of course, this will be you tonight to be able to answer any of those questions for us and for you. So I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I make the motion to be approved, this special use permit, Mr. Marlowe and Mr. Marlowe.
Okay, is there a second?
Yes.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. No discussion, no other questions. All right, all those in favor of approving the special use permit? Your permit is approved.
Thank you very much.
All right. Okay, now, Mr. McCann.
Is there, is there anything that anyone who's asked Mr. McCann? I have his profile on. When you came to community development and were told that you were grandfathered in, did you have the same plans to split the lot into two smaller lots at that time also?
No, did not at that time.
So you were asking to build on the 1.7 acres at that time?
I was asking him if I could split the lot.
Oh, you were asking him if you could split the lot?
Yes.
You said you were grandfathered in?
To build two houses, but not split the lot under the current zoning ordinance.
So you could have two structures on one lot on 7 acres?
Well, they had it today.
I just wanted to find out exactly what you were asking him that he told you you were grandfathered in for. So you could build two structures on the 1.7 acres using the current easement, and you would be permitted to do that?
That's correct.
But what you want to do is to take the 1.7 and split it and build two separate single family units.
That's correct.
Okay. So the request is not, not changing the amount of people or the structures that are going to be out there, it's just the mechanism, right? So it's either eight bedrooms or four bedrooms, four bedrooms that are connected with the breezeway, same environmental impact, or it's two separate family houses, same environment impact, it's just whether you're allowing two families to enjoy that, or if it's one family. But as far as like the septic concerns and everything else, it's the same. The perplor denial by this board doesn't affect, doesn't affect.
Can I get you in for less than a minute, for about 30 seconds? One thing I forgot to mention is, one of the first things I did on Ashburn Ryan's direction is I went to my neighbors that are immediately adjacent to me, okay? This neighbor has a half acre lot with a house on it. He has a third acre lot with another house on it directly in front of me, okay? I got, I showed them my plan, and said, will you sign the letter? They did. The undersigned homeowners, do hereby acknowledge that Charles McCann has met with us, fully explained his desire and plan to build two high quality homes on his property, create two 0.9 acre lots as prophetic text with this letter. We are in full support of this plan and welcome this type of property building plan to our community. Okay? I did the same thing down here with Mr. Howard Johnson. He said his lot, I believe, for seven or eight years. Sat with him, he reviewed it, same thing, signed the letter. Another thing I did for him is after the letter, they were concerned about their docks being too close together, because I could put, I've got an existing dock here, one here and one here. I said, what I'll do is give you at least 50 feet, what I've done on this proposal, 220 foot park between the docks. Same thing with Mr. Johnson, 300 between the docks. I've also created a 50 foot buffer area and disturbed for both of these property owners. They're thrilled with this plan. Thrilled.
This is, I looked at it in the district that I represent. I am a bit uncomfortable making a decision without hearing from Mr. Williams also.
We would be fine, but we actually thought that if it needed to be tabled until the next meeting to afford the board the opportunity to go out and look at the area, which we're more than happy to make sure that everybody knows exactly where it is, or just familiarize yourself with that, we would be perfectly fine. I also want to remind the board that it is within your authority to put any conditions that you feel would be appropriate onto, onto the approval, if you should choose to grant.
Right, and we are aware of that. But I would like to table it to the next meeting so that we can, we can have Mr. Williams here also to possibly answer any of our questions on the, on the county development side. So I would like to do that.
I think if I make sure that they understand that this is a public hearing, it has been held.
Yes, yes.
If anything, at least what he said tonight's night.
The one other thing that I, I would say, the one other thing that I would add though is, after the planning, this planning commission hearing, Mr. McCann stepped to the back, and a gentleman that was on the planning commission meeting actually stopped, introduced himself, and said, I think this is a great idea, I just didn't have the authority to approve it. So unfortunately, when we were in front of that body, they were under misunderstanding that they did not have the authority to approve this. So we just wanted, to make you figure that that was their position, or that's what they expressed with Mr. McCann.
Right, well, they're, the planning commission is a recommendation. You know, they really have no authority, as far as I am, if they need to correct me my.
You're correct, they, the planning commission is recommending body to.
Right, right.
Have you sent the health department plans, a site plan to show where these houses are going? Or you said that indicated I would approve the two septic system?
Yes, I have, I've shown them the two lot plan, and they can go as long as they can live.
These all are greatly in excess of what the requirements under the state of Georgia law are on site sewer management. It exceeds both the drainage field and the distance. These would be further actually than the ones that are being constructed that he showed you that are adjacent to your water withdrawal drainage source.
Okay, well, we will, yes, we have titled, we have titled it to the next meeting. Close the, close the panel. Thank you.
What day is the next meeting?
First, May 21st.
Same place, same thing. Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is the county's insurance renewal. Mr. John Leggett with MSI, if you will come forward please.
Does everyone have this presentation on?
Yes. Sure. This is much easier.
It's much easier. Good evening, board. It's John Leggett with MSI, here to talk about the benefits renewal. I wasn't here last year, and I was told that I only show up when I have bad news. Last year was a good year, there was no increase. This year's even better. This year's a decrease, so I'll just start off by saying no.
That's, that's.
It's even better, right? So, right now, the county has Anthem, Blue Cross, and through ACCG, along with, there's, you know, ACCG has the program, well, there's 85 other counties, or 84 other counties, and you're all part of that. And so the renewals released a couple weeks, a few weeks back. We, we are independents, we went to market, and, you know, before we even had the renewal, we had a competitive, competitive boil of the channel from Humana, who's been competitive over here, actually shared it with them before they released the renewals, and I think that would have helped a lot with this renewal. So what we're looking at is about a 5% decrease. So you, in front of you, you have option one and option two, page two and page three. There's no anticipated changes, no recommended changes to the plans that are offered right now. As you know, the employees are offered two options, a base, referred to as a base, and a buy-up. Right now, we have 235 employees that are on the base plan, with about 14 on buy-up. And the county pays 100% of employee costs on the base plan, and actually about 14, just a little over 14% for family coverage. And so if you go down below, if you look and said, okay, we're going to hold the employee deductions, option one would, would, would be keeping the employee deductions the same. And so the county's overall costs would go down almost 6%, or about 110,000. However, if you go to option two, we think that if the county were to keep the same contribution percentage, as I said, I think it's like 14.38%, I said it right there, towards the dependents, then the county's overall net decrease would be exactly 5%, and the employees' costs would go down if you have dependent coverage. If you look up top, you can see employee spouse, children, and family, and you see there's not a whole lot of folks that cover their family members out here, and obviously it's due to cost. So we have 13, or I guess 17 overall that cover spouse, we've got 11 that cover a child or children, and we've got about nine people that cover both spouse and children. And so, looking at option two, if you went with this route, it'd be about 90, almost a $94,000 decrease to the county's budget. You go to the next page, this is the competitive option that we got, this was the only one we received, it is from Humana. You know, I don't recommend, you know, you first glance at it, it's a little bit better savings than Anthem, but you'd be leaving the pool, which we talked about every year, Blue Cross has the better discounts, and if you leave Blue Cross, you can't come back for two years. So I feel like, it seems like a no brainer to me to renew with Anthem. I think it's just a matter of determining how much the county wants to contribute really towards the family costs. One of the things you don't have that we, actually Chris kind of put this together, and I have it in front of me, is we took a look at what, using an example of two employees, one employee with single coverage, working here, making 16, 72 an hour, and the other employee making the same amount with the family coverage, where the, where the current cost stands. And so, the example, the employee with single coverage, the, working 80 hours, the bring home after paying nothing for the health insurance, because the county pays all of it. $4.46 for the dental, $3.76 for the vision, taxes about $231. That, that employee's take home pay every two weeks is just, just under $1,100, or $28,500, $28,500. And that same employee with family coverage would be, the take home pay would be about $747 every two weeks, or about $19,400, because the employee has to pay about $438, $433 a paycheck for family. And so in a year when the cost is going down, we thought it might be a good time to look at that. When we look at the benchmark, and we've done this, we did this a couple of years ago, I pulled it this year, and when I look at the survey that we did, we looked and we compared the state health benefit plan, which is, they use, they have Blue Cross United Healthcare, we put Harris County in there, and there's about 45 other public sector counties and cities. Overall, counties contributing, public governments contribute about 92% for employee costs. You guys are 100, so you're above that. But when it comes to the family, it's about 62, 63% that they're contributing, and as I said, you guys are at 14%. So, the thought was, in looking at the difference in the take home pay in the two examples, in a year when we're getting a decrease, we took a look at many different options, with a county, say, going to 25%, 50%, all the way up to 63, which is the average. And one thing you have to factor is, if the county pays more for family coverage, guess what? More employees are going to put their family on the plan, which is a good thing, but it also means the county's costs would go up. So if you sat there and you said, we're going to pay 63%, and we calculated budget based on the enrollment right now, you can't expect that to stay the same, there are going to be a lot of folks having their coverage. So it's something to consider. You guys, when you look at your presentation, you're going to see option one and option two. And option two would be the recommendation, if I had to pick one, because, you know, it would be the county at least keeping the contributions the same. But you could also consider, and we can show you this as well, if the county went to, say, 25% for instance, of the employee costs, the employee's deductions for family would, instead of 254 for a spouse every two weeks, it'd be 211. Instead of a 229 for a dependent, it'd be 191. Instead of $433, it would be 360. So it's still a good bit, but, but a little bit lower cost for the employees. Though, based on the enrollment, this would still be a $60,000 decrease.
And that's at 2000?
At 25%.
25%.
So we looked at 25. If we went to 50%, it basically got us to a flat. It's about, about .9% above current. And then, of course, if we went to this, to 75%, it's a 5% increase, and then the 63% would have been about a 2% increase. So it was, you know.
So how many employees did your model include participating?
The current. That's, that's the current enrollment. It's hard to estimate, you know? So I, if you, I would be worried if we said, let's just make it 63%, like everybody else is doing, and this is going to shoot up. So I think, I think 25% is a reasonable number, if, you know, if you're looking at it. And we wouldn't know until after open enrollment what the actual budget number was, which the open enrollment is scheduled.
June 6.
Yeah, you said here, six and seven. So we would know after that. You know, and you guys can vote to leave the deductions the same, or keep the contribution the same, or you can go to 25, so obviously on you, but we just wanted to kind of lay that out for you to, to see, because, you know, look at what other governments are doing, and in a year getting a decrease, it would be the year to try to do something like that if you wanted to. So, that being said, if we go to page five, one thing I, you know, also, when we get these carriers pointing against Anthem for these counties like you guys, I say, you know what, if you really want to run a county, you need to give us a guarantee. How about capping the renewal first year, because when you leave Anthem, you can't come back for two years. So the thought is, they'll give you a low rate, and the next year they'll jack the price up, and we can't, don't have anywhere to go. And the best thing to do is, if they run here, we'll give them this. If they run here, we'll give them this. And if it's over 95%, there's no guarantee. So they won't give us a guarantee. And so, yes, when you look at Humana, it is a little bit lower, but because of this, because of the two-year rule, I don't think it makes sense to even consider them this year. Again, we went to ADNIS, United Healthcare, none of them are willing to, were not competitive. If you go to page seven, that is the dental renewal, there's no change in premium there, we got quote from Humana, but again, I would not move the Humana on the dental, of course, if they're keeping coverage with Anthem. And then it reaches to the basic life. We got a slight increase this year for MetLife on the 13,000 that all employees get, all full-time employees. So the annual increase here is about $660. We did get a competitive quote from One America, and we bounced it around, we talked about it, because they also do the voluntary life and the short term. But I think it'd be right, we, we felt that MetLife had done a really good job in paying claims, and everybody felt it probably best to renew with that, but it could also change to One America, and the cost would remain the same. But then there would be some, there could be changes in the, in the rates on the life insurance. So that's an option on the table. It's either renew with that or go to One America. Trying to be quick for you guys. Page nine is kind of what's new. I highlighted a couple of things that are neat that we're going to promote this year that we want employees to know about. You guys may be familiar, I'll start with the first one. The first one is the wellness program. Blue Cross has a new Get Strong Wellness Program, and employees can earn up to $200. It's paid by Blue Cross for doing a, if they get Prudential Tobacco Free, they get 50 bucks. If they do a flu shot, and they get a wellness, and a screening, they get $100. And if they do an online health risk assessment, they get $50 for that. Blue Cross actually mail them a card, and we're going to be promoting that and educating the boys on if you're going to enroll in. The other thing, is any of you guys familiar with a teledoc, of being able to see a doctor on your phone? I think I've talked about it. It's going to be free up to 12 times a year, per member, and we're, so we're going to make sure everybody's aware of that, so they don't run into the ER allergic care, you know, if your child's got a fever or something, you can at least try that option first, and it doesn't cause anything. So, Blue Cross is rolling that out for the life card. And then the last, last page, again, that just confirms what open enrollment is, on page 10, we'll be getting packets out by Friday, page 17, and then have a summary of everything on page 1.
Thank you. Randy, do you have anything you want to add?
No, John's pretty comprehensive, but again, it requires a decision on option one or option two. The only difference is, option two, which is being recommended. The only difference is, option two, which is being recommended, keeps the dependent cost, contributions from the county at fourteen point three eight percent. Option one changes it, decreases it to nine point eight seven percent. So that's the only question that's lingering. Or does the board want to increase that dependent coverage from fourteen point three eight? And do they want to increase it to twenty-five or fifty percent like Mr. Regis has discussed? That's the only question, Julie.
Fifty percent is to break even, but we would have more.
Correct. Well, it's break even based on what we have now.
Yeah.
It might not be, you know, how many people come in.
That's what I'm saying. It would go up after open enrollment. We don't have anybody predict that, what that might be. But I do think fourteen percent is very low, considering four hundred and forty-three.
Yeah, I think at the B Street, it should go to twenty-five percent, and that's at the B. A lot of young people with families that may have cash.
Twenty-five percent is current enrollment, is still the savings I see.
Correct. So basically, you have sixty thousand play with, if enrollment increased for families.
What have you put in the budget so far?
Option number two.
Which keeps it the same?
Keeps everything the same.
I think this, if you see this, this does a really good job. I mean, it's such a huge difference for somebody to pay for family coverage, maybe someone who's single. Of course, once open enrollment is complete, we actually provide the final breakdown for that. And open enrollment should be complete by that last day, I think it's the last June.
They're making those decisions based on what?
So... And so as you've seen in the past, we do a benefit handbook, so everybody can get the letter. And if you guys contribute more, they'll be told that. Here's a new cost. The county's contributing more, your cost's actually going down for family. And then we'll do the enrollment. Once enrollment's closed, we'll be able to see exactly where it came in.
Is there any discussion? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion if we approve option two. Increase our contribution toward the families twenty-five percent.
Yeah, I'll say a bit. Here, we have two seconds. All those in favor? Motion key. Option two is an increase to twenty-five percent.
Okay. And please, everything, the dental. Yeah, hang on. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I need a bunch of numbers for her.
Okay. Our next item on the agenda is our comprehensive plan update, Mr. Regis. You've got a comprehensive plan meeting, I've been working on this for almost a year. You were given a copy of this, but the final version, which has a few things that were not included in the chart.
And those few things, just map, we added map numbers and table numbers. Added map numbers and table numbers. Map line, map two, map three, table one, table two.
So, yeah, what, besides the map numbers and table numbers and all that, what are the differences between what the dental plan?
Maybe a typo correction, that sort of thing. It's all grammatical. No, nothing of substance. As, as, did you want me to proceed?
Sure.
As Chairman Leinster said, it's been a little bit over a year process. I don't have much to say, because I've had to say something for ten out of twelve months anyway, and my voice isn't real. But tonight's action, what you will do is approve, transmit the document to us, and then we send it to the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. And they review it, as I told you at the last meeting, they've been getting comments back anywhere between six days and ten days. So very quickly. Good news is if you don't have comments, but if they do give you comments, it takes about two to three days to make those comments. Some are as simple as they had a picture, some are as simple as, well, you didn't address this need, so go back and address it, and that's it. You won't adopt the plan until DCA's fine with it all, and then that's when we'll give you a resolution to adopt the plan. And that has to be done before June thirtieth. That's it.
Does anybody have any comments? I think we've seen this about fifteen different times. It's been a long time, it's been a long process. But I think it's, I think it's a good document. Thank you, Regis, for all the work you've done, and Allison also.
Oh, and it was...
We appreciate that, and of course, we do appreciate all of our community members who spent their personal time...
Two hours.
That's right, once a month. So, but if they have any questions?
Are those community members listening?
None of them. Nothing at all. So did you say from the transmittal, I would completely document?
Yes, you're going on the transmittal.
No questions? No changes? I mean, we're going to keep my hand in the question.
Well, I do. On transportation, where it says create a visually appealing gateway into the county along State Road Eighteen to intersection of US twenty-seven and State Road Eighteen. I'm assuming we're talking, basically trying to keep eighteen as like a scenic byway. Is that what that is talking about?
I don't know if it would necessarily be true.
Are we talking about going into like where it actually connects?
Of a scenic byway? But, yeah, it would be, at some point in time, if you all wanted to adopt any options to do that, like an overlay district or something, but we don't use the term overlay unless it's not in there.
Right.
It's, it just puts the thought there, given the historical significance of eighteen, especially certain areas through towards minebound, that you could, it lays the foundation, although you don't have to, to, if you want to do something additional to the base zoning ordinance that controls signage, or just require this or that.
All right, because the way I read it at first, it felt like it was talking about the intersection. But I'm assuming we're talking about where it starts always, so basically all of eighteen. So we kind of had an end, and we just didn't have a beginning. That's kind of a little throwing me off. Okay. I mean, really, that was one question, it was kind of, I was like, are we talking like right in the middle of minebound? Because then that's, you know, that's minebound's deal.
Well, they're, they're working on that too.
Right.
That's true.
Right.
Actually, they're, they're looking at it.
Right, yes.
Anybody have any other questions for me? Is there a motion to approve the transmission?
True, man.
The transmission, the transmission to River Valley, Rachel Christian, to the Georgia Park. Okay. There's a motion to second. All right, so motion to second to approve the transmission to RVRC, so that you may transmit it to the DCA, the state DCA. All those in favor? All right, motion carries. Thank you, Regis.
Thank you, Ms. Regis.
Almost put it to bed.
Yeah, I can just get it.
Okay.
Stop while I'm away then. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is our county manager, and he has about four items.
Madam Chairman, Board of Commissioners, the first item, number nine, is the Melvin Let's Dam Design. Earlier this year, back in March, the board discussed option eight, and selected option, took option eight and continued with that for the Melvin Let's Dam project. Our engineering consultant, Carlos Flute, has prepared a script of services, and that's as a task order, to do the option eight design. That will include construction drawings, specifications, coordination of meetings, all the way up to bidding for a price of forty-eight thousand dollars. Funding will come from next year's, from the current year and next year's budget in public or professional services. And so basically, to keep them moving, staff recommends the board approve forty thousand dollars for this project with the funding coming already in the budget.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
Comment? I'm gonna vote against this. What we are doing here is part of a bigger issue, is paying taxpayer dollars for a private subdivision. I think that's not what we are supposed to be doing. It's not how we're supposed to be paying, spending the taxpayer's money. And we've had really no input or offer from the residents of the subdivision to contribute any significant dollars toward this project. It's also a fairly, we don't have the final yet, but somewhere in the range of four hundred thousand dollars. And we're looking at taking that money out of the budget that I think would be much better used elsewhere. We've talked about trying to address the compression issue for our employees, to help them a little bit. And this would go a long way toward addressing that, that issue also. And we don't know for sure whether this is the reason, but we just had a finalist for another large group company moving into the business park. But because we had been short of funding, we had not prepared an acreage there, and so we passed, we lost an opportunity. We were not granted that. It went to Alabama. And the tax revenue from that could have been, could have been three hundred thousand, four hundred thousand dollars a year to the county. I think we don't need to be helping private citizens with county taxpayer money when we have other things more deserving.
Do you, here, do you, do you have any other questions? That could be used that we may not know about?
You know, and I applaud Andrew. He came up with option eight, and I think of the options presented. That one, other than the low-cost option, was to stop the road, drain the lake, which, and we probably would have ended up having to pay for that. Because if residents couldn't, wouldn't, couldn't pay for it, probably would have covered the county. Certainly, had they come to the county, I'd have been happy to be rid of a category one dam in the county. I do know that there are, you know, there are at least one other category one dam in the county, and I happen to know that that particular subdivision is looking at paying a hundred and some odd thousand dollars to address the issue as a safety thing, and they certainly are not coming to the county to ask for help. We vote to help this other subdivision, we may have others come in for the same reason. I just, principally, I don't think that's what we're supposed to use taxpayer money for.
Well, thank you for your comments. Appreciate that.
Does that other subdivision have a county road over that dam?
No. There is another subdivision in the county that does have a county road over a dam. And they have talked to the DNR, they've talked to EPD, they follow protocol, they keep the trees cut. They clear it, they make sure everything is where it has to be, because they understand it's their responsibility. And if they fail in that responsibility, and that has to be addressed, it's gonna rest on the residents in that subdivision.
Anybody have any other comments? Is there a motion regarding the proposal for the eighty thousand dollars in the scope of services?
I'd make a motion to deny.
Okay, there's a motion to deny. Is there a second?
I'll second if you give the vote of approval.
There is a motion and a second. All those in favor of denying? Okay, all those opposed?
Need to pause the motion.
And we do need a motion to approve.
Can I make the motion to approve the forty-eight thousand dollars to move forward with the project?
Okay, there is a motion to approve the fee of forty-eight thousand dollars and the proposal and the scope of services. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor? All right, motion carries. Randy, next item?
Madam Chairman, Board of Commissioners, the next one is a bid award for clearing and grubbing thirty-five acres of the northwest Harris Business Park. During, earlier this year, January second, twenty nineteen, during that commission meeting, the board authorized the consultants Harris Gray to prepare a sole erosion plan and obtain all necessary permits to clear and grub thirty-five acres of the northwest Harris Business Park. The plan was completed at a cost of ten thousand six hundred dollars. Subsequently, the project was bid out, and ten bids were received on late April, April twenty-fourth. You can see that the county did receive ten bids, ranging from sixty-five thousand eight hundred to four hundred and thirty-five thousand seven ninety. The low bidder, CNS Construction out of Jonesboro, did not meet the bid requirements. He failed to include certain required documentation as required by the bid, and therefore was disqualified. The second low bidder, Evergreen Erosion out of Opelock, Alabama, at a hundred and eighty-nine thousand five sixty, met all qualifications, met all the paperwork, and we are recommending them for, to do this project. Funding for this project is included in next year's budget, it's law study nineteen, under economic development. And it is, once the, if the board approves this, and they get started, it's a ninety-day completion period.
Is there any discussion or any questions?
I've got a question on it. What was the purpose for choosing this particular location in the industrial park? Looking at the plans, it was like, if we proceed to this thirty-five acres, not only will we have to clear and scrub, we'll also have to build a road to this location. And there's other locations that are located on the road, and based off their topography, might be an easier location to work at. I don't know why we're choosing this thirty-five acres versus another location in the park that may be easier or cheaper to clear and scrub.
Correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think we have a thirty-five acre section, which is what we had, we're looking at with this one that we lost. I don't believe we have another thirty-five acre section in there that is easier. I don't believe we have another thirty-five acre section in there that is easier. Either the topography is, will take a lot of filling and grading. There is a section out there where Dehawn had their fire, all the concrete debris was dumped there. So I don't know what it could be useful, or if we're going to have to spend a lot there. Yes, we would have to put a road into this area. We don't necessarily have to finish making the road again. I don't think, other than, there is one other section, and that's on the other side of 103, that's further away, does not have water and sewer run to it. And to run the water and sewer to that would probably be a million bucks or something, very substantial. Because we first, when they, they, they saw, looked at the plant, place right there now, they wanted to do it at the further end of this hundred or so acres, and it was going to be a million, two hundred fifty thousand dollars to get water and sewer down there. So I don't think there's usable, a usable thirty-five acres. You know, we've got a couple of smaller tracts that could be clearly used, but not for a big, big deal.
The other thing I looked into was, I went to the site and looked at, and right now you've got a lot of small trees out there, very small trees. So I looked at the possibility of maybe having like a big forestry mulcher coming out and just mulching everything, which would be much, much cheaper, less than, than half the cost of our, not our lowest bid, but the second lowest bid at a hundred and eighty-nine thousand. I guess the lowest bid there was unacceptable, they didn't meet the requirements. But if we had a forestry mulcher come out and they could mulch everything down the ground level, you would have some stumps below ground level, but the trees are so small, and that stuff's going to rot in a couple of years. You know, the other thing with forestry mulching, you're not disturbing any soil, so you don't have any permits that are required to get for soil disturbance. So you'll clear the property, somebody would be able to see the property. You know, I don't think there's much grading work that was involved in the bid that we put out for the thirty-five acres.
I'm getting ready to ask you, because what we, what we have said, and that doesn't mean we can't change with this one in a way. We had said we would do some preliminary grading, we're not going to, we're not going to accept the responsibility of grading it for pad ready. There's no way we can do it, the stump has to be gone and all that kind of stuff. And we're going to do a little bit of grading, just to get it a little more level.
Right. But that doesn't have to be part of any future offers.
Is this a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, five sixty, is that a higher estimate than what we actually thought it was going to be? I thought that we kind of could talk about it being actually lower than that, higher than sixty-five, eight hundred, but I thought we had, thought it might be lower than a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, like around a hundred and sixty or somewhere in that range.
I think our original cost estimate from the engineers was right at a hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
To clear, grub, what, silt fence, clear, grub, burn.
So this is actually eighty, roughly ninety thousand more than what we actually thought it might be.
Than the, than the engineers.
Right, originally.
I got some very rough numbers on the forestry mulching, and that was closer to seventy thousand. It's possible less than that.
I agree with that, so that's certainly something we can look at.
It basically, just turns everything.
Nice, here. But the engineers told me, if you just mulched it and left the stumps, once you sold the site, then you got to pull, then you got to put the silt fence in and pull the stumps up in order for construction to begin.
I understand that. Those trees are so small, I don't know how often, if we've got somebody looking at the park, you know, once or twice a year, then maybe we did go ahead and pull the stumps up, but if nobody's looking, how, how often has, or, how many, how, other than this past company that inquired about the property, what was prior to that?
Well, as the economy has kind of changed around, we went for several years without any. We had maybe, what, three, three that were seriously looking, looking at it, and then there was another smaller one. I tried, even though it was ten, I tried to get anyone that's seven, seven acre slot. So it's, it's a time when folk, the economy is picking back up and getting more activity. I, Megan, if you want to say anything, because Megan is economic development director for West Point, and is in touch with Georgia Economic Development on a very frequent basis, so maybe you better answer that than not.
Well, I think the most important part from economic development and business recruitment is the company's timeline for construction, and so having a site ready for them to begin construction, so, because they have a market, a timeline, which they've got to be in production and upon the market as well. And so, as you, not only, if you look at other counties and communities across the state, more and more are having, the inventory of buildings is getting low, and so people are, I mean, you're going to have, you're going to have to find land, and so it's just more marketable as a site, and so we could see an increase in activity if we had it a little bit further developed from, you know, project activity and business recruitment side of things.
Megan Wood, are you familiar with the mulching approach that the engineers talked about?
I know that Columbus is doing something very similar in their new business park, and then, as well as your concerns with the roads, I think now is actually a time for us to sit down and have that conversation, to give you confidence on how, to, how to fund that and how to utilize, you know, state grants or loans, or, and how we can collaborate in that type of project, so that you feel confident when the project is looking as well. So I hope that that's not a barrier in this decision. But the mulching is the, I know that Columbus has that activity on one of their sites in their new business technology park.
Would this get us closer to the grad certification?
This would be, a small step, yes, there's, I do have, there's a lot. There's a lot of criteria, yes, for the grad certification.
One of the things.
So this would, this would help us, yes. Grad certification is Georgia-ready for accelerated development. It is the Georgia's, state of Georgia's marketing for sites that are ready, I mean, development ready. It's the only sites that they, really, the state is marketing. And a lot of times their criteria, project criteria, sometimes the first question is, are you looking for a grad site? And right now, the northwest Harris Business Park does not have that designation.
But I think clearing, you know, is a great idea, but if we did, if we mulched the property...
So I'd like to table this until we can find out where we are. I mean, we can always go close.
We don't have, we've got one that maybe could, or maybe couldn't, I haven't heard anything from them for a while, but, yeah.
I'd like to, yeah, and looking at that, I mean, I'm often looking at different options as to how we can do things for last time.
Well, I agree, and I, you know, we were going to do it ourselves, for just thirty-five acres, but then, then we got the blessing of the tornado, and everything else, so.
There was no way.
And, and that one company was looking, they wanted to start construction in Ju, probably in July.
July, yes.
So we weren't going to make it that fast.
So you're tailing this for what then? Why am I tailing this?
No, for, to win.
Well, I'm, I'm asking, you're asking the reason for the table. Because I'd like to look into these other options, since Megan, this time, this Columbus is doing this.
So we're just going to break into that information.
We could sit down then, either then, for mulching. You'd have a, a mulching bid.
I know, but it's for the same project.
You'd have rejected, you'd have rejected all these, all these bids and...
Well, I'd make a motion we reject every one of these bids, because if our initial estimate was a hundred thousand dollars, and we're ninety thousand dollars over that, I'm not real comfortable going that extra ninety thousand dollars.
And you could table it until you come back to see what you want to do, or you can move through the option, if you don't table it, just reject all the bids and, and re-examine the, or re-engineer the project.
How good, how long are these bids good for?
Hundred twenty days.
Well, we could, I mean, this could be something, after Randy, you could take a look at Columbus, see what they're doing, and see if they'd be an option for us, or maybe, yes, ma'am, maybe just got a motion on the floor, is all I can say.
Nobody's saying that yet.
I know, yeah. Yeah, is there a discussion?
With the motions, I mean, you said you said, I thought you said you wanted to table it.
She says she wants to table it.
Under our local rules, your, your motion to play those.
Okay. And my, my original question was, the reason for tailing is just to look at the mulching to, right.
To reevaluate the project.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Okay, Randy?
The next item, item number eleven, is a, the Dayso stream reroute, change order number one. During August 7th of last year, the board approved a little bit of TACO to perform the stream rerouting project for the northwest Harris Business Park, to get the property ready for Dayso, so they could construct their next phase of the industrial project. And the low bidder of TACO was putting twenty-five thousand, two hundred thirty-five dollars and fifty-four cents. This large earth moving project has had unforeseen events and unforeseen field conditions, and the consulting engineer at GMC is recommending a change order in the matter of two hundred fifty-one thousand, two hundred thirteen dollars and seventy-five cents. This change order will include clearing and grubbing of additional one-acre stockpile site, burn, install a pot for creek crossing, and removal and excavate and haul twenty thousand additional cubic yards of excess material and hydrose the stockpile and the haul road areas. The proposed change order approved will increase the total project cost from the four hundred twenty-five thousand, two thirty-five, fifty-four cents, to six hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred forty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents, well below the original second low bidder of eight hundred forty-two thousand, hundred ten, and the original budget of one million, four hundred five thousand, five hundred. Funding for this project is already budgeted in this year's budget, and will come from the solid waste funds if approved. Senator Campbell of GMC is here at the meeting to answer any questions the board made out.
Sure. Mr. Dolly mentioned before that I was here back in September, the board awarded us a bid of this project, and started construction back during that time. The first phase of the project was to reroute the existing stream. December was one of the wedges, December we had obstacles, we had challenges with vegetation established at that time, but the project on hold until May when vegetation was established. Contractor proceeded to the second phase of the project, which was getting the building pad ready for the future Dayso building. During that time is when a lot of the green, concrete, rubble, things that I saw were discovered. Contractor has been good about working, getting the work done. We've got to a point where they have moved all the dirt that was obligated in the contract. Dayso wants the pad, the project to be pad ready, and says if, if we don't get it to their pad ready state at this time, you know, we'll be looking for the board at a later date when they prepare to do their, their new building, to get it to the pad ready state. So I asked the contractor what would be the cost to get it to that point at this time, instead of waiting until a later date, and that's the two hundred fifty-one thousand dollars that Mr. Dolly mentioned. I think that's a fair number, and it's the board's choice on whether that work is done now or done at a later date when Dayso gets ready to get their building, their next building constructed. We've asked the person women at BE, and they said that it depends on the market, depends on Kia, the lines that they're, I think Kia has bring, has brought the tele riders, and the board, it just ends up out, the other vehicles, and some of the other, I think Dayso is out of manufacturing to Kia, but also to Hyundai and Montgomery. And then Dayso, Dehawn, Kia, and Hyundai, on whether that building would be in two years, three years, or when that time, right, would be.
So it's the debris, other destruction debris that was buried, a lot.
Yes, ma'am, it was a lot of concrete rubble that no one knew was there, and it was back here with dirt and covered up, and there was a lot of excess soil there as well. I, I, I don't know.
So it's not rock from just a granite bay?
No, there is a rock there, but that's, that's not the only culprit, no, ma'am.
This is not debris that was placed there during the first?
No.
It's not. This is something that's been there.
Fairly, I mean, I wanted to...
Yeah, I can, I can say.
In other words, it's not been moved once?
No, no, well, not, not that I know of, not that I know of, yes.
The, the, just, just where the Mobus plant is there, directly across the street from them, that's where the debris from the Dehawn building was dumped, over there, so it's way, way, way.
Yeah, that, that concrete still building, you can see that. This was all covered up.
This, I don't know how this got there, certainly, nothing.
Okay, all right. And what was our agreement with Dayso? Was it to provide pad ready?
No.
It evolved.
It was not.
It was not pad ready, that we would clear and grub.
That's where the, when it first, that's the way it first started.
That's what it was.
And Dayso, the initial agreement was to reroute the stream, and at one time the county was looking to do that with county forces. That was a larger undertaking, the county forces thought that they could handle. So we talked about getting it out, and at that time, where do we put the excess material that comes out of the stream? And at that time, Dayso says, will Harris County get the pad, the site better prepared? And Commissioner Lang and Mr. Dolly knows better what the agreement, I, I don't know what the agreement was, what they were written.
My knowledge, we don't, we did not say pad ready ever, because the people that built their first plant did the grading to make it pad ready, we did not. We, we cleared, grubbed, and did some preliminary.
Yeah, and I, I don't know if they never agreed.
I would disagree with the pad ready, and I just...
Well, I, I guess, I guess, and I'm just sitting here thinking, if that was not Harris County's agreement with Dayso, but we're being asked to foot the bill, are they not willing to meet us halfway or something?
And we tried that one. Dayso thinks it's part agreement, I don't know if there's been an agreement. So Mr. Dolly and I just met up, and asked them if they were bringing any funds to the table, and that's when they said, well, you know, we'll, we'll wait until a later day when the building construction starts, and we'll come to Harris County and ask.
Do we have a written agreement with Dayso?
I think so, you know, I, I, my gut reaction, as I recall it, I'll go back and look, I would, my gut reaction was, it would be pad ready, but.
Oh, you...
That's what I thought, but, you know, because every month, you know, being, changing stream would make it pad, pad, pad ready.
Well, there are different definitions of pad ready.
Yeah, there is, and, and just kind of...
And I don't, Dayso, Dayso, their expectations from the get-go was a pad ready site.
That's what they're saying, yes, sir.
I would...
I don't ever recall hearing.
We need to just lay...
I agree, we need to table this one also until we can...
I'll look at it, look at it, you're reading.
Yeah, exactly.
If I'm wrong, I'm sorry, but I just, I don't recall.
So that's what, we'll table the change order of the Dayso project until we can determine exactly what we have contracted for and what we're planning.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Aaron. Thank you.
Okay, Randy, your project updates.
Madam Chairman, Board Commissioners, a quick review of the projects. Again, the fishery year is coming to a close. Item number two, replacement jaws of live three cents, they have been ordered, they should be, they should be here this week. Number six, Elzy Park, of course, that project has been delayed indefinitely, and we have a bid out this week to see what the cost might be to chip and grind the collected storm debris of about thirty to forty duction loads of material, where they collect the material. Number seven, the Russell Trails, the T portion is on bid, and the bid opening is May the 30th, to do that portion, and once that portion is done, then the other portions will piggyback on that. Because the federal government, they don't want us to combine different federal grants in the same bid award, so we have to do them all separately. Number eight, Phase Two of the Wild Offense Airport, that has been, you know, bid out, approved, and that should begin very soon, and be completed in July. Number 10, Remark Airport Runway and Cracked Seal Project, again, that's been approved, awarded, and that should be completed by July. The airport landing, 11, was a success. Thanks goes to Linda Dawson and, and all the airplanes, and all the flyers, and everybody who participated in that very successful bid.
The people that left because of the little bit of rain, they just don't know what they missed.
I think it rained.
The sun came out, and it, well, it turned to be a beautiful day.
It rained on for six minutes.
Yeah, it was, it was a great time, I have...
Yeah, it was, it was a great time, had my own. I can tell you that, my grandson had a great time. No, if I'm playing, I may have to buy him Andy's train.
And then the number 16, the corporate investment update is almost finished, and that's a 10-year project. And number 22, chip and grind, collect the store of the Great Ocean Park, that is on bid, and we should get those results in that several weeks. And you can see, interestingly, in the statistical information, the SPOS, the five-year SPOS plan has been concluded. So we did collect 60 months, and you can see, 60 months of SPOS collection, it raised around $12 million, $12.4 million. So over a five-year period, the county collected $12.4 million of SPOS dollars, which averaged about $206,516 per month. And now we are ready to go on SPOS 2019. So that's basically in and of show all the projects that are going on, that have yet to be completed.
Any questions for Randy?
Have we had any update on the bronze plaque for the community?
It's been ordered.
Because I actually have people asking me, because since I brought it up.
It's not been ever sent here, but I can, we're going to get it. It's been ordered, it should be here any, any, any day now. Unfortunately, you know, remember Lee Martin, the architec?
Yes.
He has left, he, to die. So this is one of those last things to get done before he moves to Kennesaw.
Randy, nothing else for Randy? We don't have anything else, Randy? Mr. Taylor?
Yes, ma'am, I have two items that, that Commissioner needs to address tonight. One is the Georgia Department Corrections Agreement for the Harris County Prison.